Let's call this meeting to order, please. Stand for the Pledgeable Agents. Pledgeable Agents.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and just as.
Can you read the role, please? Ms. Bash?
Here.
Ms. Elliott? Ms. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Nyhus?
Here.
Ms. Paul is here. Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Here.
Ms. Kuntchel?
Ms. Teet?
Here.
Next item is to approve of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
I want to approve the agenda as presented.
Melissa made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard John second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
John, would you like to cast your vote verbally?
It won't come up.
She can do it, right?
Yeah, Lindsay can do it.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven zero. Next item, public announcements, recognition, upcoming events. National Nurses Week is May ninth through the fourteenth. Thank you to Abby Tway for her service to students, staff, and families. In conjunction with a wear base in the Evansville Community Partnership, Evansville Community School District is sponsoring an event on May seventeenth from six thirty to eight PM at the Eager Free Public Library. Mark Perry, Executive Director of Community Action, will lead a roundtable discussion on becoming better neighbors. Community members will have the opportunity to share experiences and learn how to respond to acts of hate and bias when they occur. And I hope board members, if possible, can attend. Next, the Strategic Planning Committee reconvenes Friday, May thirteenth, at Creekside Place. The meeting will take place from eight AM to three. And since we did such a good job the previous weekend, we don't have to come on Saturday, right?
Right.
So that's great.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
A big thank you and congratulations to Alex Kuchel and Ashlyn Teet?
Yes.
For serving on the Board of Education as our high school representative and as graduates of the class of 2022.
Certificate for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And another little something.
Another little. Another little something sweet.
Thank you.
Actually, Alex, I wish I would have thought of this before. I thought about this at like five fifty-nine. If I would have thought about it at five fifty, I would have run to my office and brought it. I have in my office the plant you gave me last year around this time. I was visiting the district on Fridays.
Oh, and the basket?
Yes, and you brought me over a basket with a bunch of gifts.
Thank you.
And a little plant, and it's in my office. Yeah, I remember that very clearly. I believe it's been a year.
So have you talked the experience up enough that we'll have applicants for these roles next year?
Three applicants.
Ooh, good.
Awesome.
Thank you. It's been a, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, our public presentations. Do we have any other presentations?
We do that.
All right. Next is information and discussion. And the first on the agenda is High School Board Representatives Report.
As the school year is winding down, the craziness is picking up, it seems. This week, last week, and next week, students are taking advanced placement tests for the AP classes. Coming up in the following weeks, Honors and Awards Night is May eighteenth at seven o'clock. Scholarship Night is May twenty-fifth at seven o'clock. And Fine Arts Awards Night is June first at seven o'clock. Also further down the road, the Class of 2022 Graduation Ceremony is June third at Ron Gross Field Football Field at seven o'clock with a rain date the following day.
Last week was Staff Appreciation Week. At the high school, the district council designated each grade level to prepare a breakfast for the staff each day of the week. Some students brought donuts, others brought fruit, muffins, and much more. Also on Friday, a handful of students cooked out and prepared lunch for the staff. Last week was, um, we already talked about that. Also, last week was prom. We were fortunate enough to be able to have DJ Mondo, who DJs for Bucks and Badger Games. Come DJ for our prom. Students seemed to have a great time.
We would like to give a shout out to the amazing cast of SpongeBob the Musical. They performed four performances over the weekend of April twenty-second to April twenty-fourth and could be described as being incredible, passionate, and lively. All students were thankful for the opportunity to be back on stage in person this year. On April twenty-fourth, Evansville sent two teams to the Quiz Bowl Small School National Championship Tournament in Chicago. One of the Evansville teams earned a nineteenth seed going into Sunday playoffs and earned a seventeenth place spot in the playoffs. The other Evansville team was placed into consolation play. Overall, Eli Winchell was one hundred and twenty-fifth place. Trenton Multer was one hundred and fourteenth place. Declan Cobb was fifty-eighth place. Adrian Royce was forty-eighth place. And Kevin Hero was tenth place, earning an individual All-Star Award.
The Handbook Committee has met multiple times in the past few months. The student committee is made up of around six or seven students, including myself and Ashlyn. It is very interesting to hear about the perspectives of other students on issues we have in the school. The topics that we have focused on are dress code, open campus, and the phone policy. All students are very respectful of others' opinions, even opposing opinions, and it helps us to see other sides we might not have thought of beforehand.
We would like to express our gratitude for the amazing opportunity to serve as high school representatives on the school board this year. We learned a lot about policies and how the school board works, and we are thankful that we were able to learn from this experience.
We hope that next year, the school board, high school representatives, can be even more involved and focus on sharing the important student perspective. We believe the most important topics to focus on in upcoming years are student involvement, inclusivity, and student leadership.
Thank you.
Any questions for, for the students?
I like the focus, the future focus. All right. Let's move on to tennis court donation follow-up information. And just for the, the board members who just got elected, just calling your attention to that the board previously approved this pending more information. And so this is the more information that's coming. All right, Kendall, thank you.
Yeah, so good evening, everybody. Just a tennis court update. So the board approved pending further information. This is the further information that follows. And then hopefully this gets the discussion going. And I can answer any questions if you have it as well. So there's a, we have a place to put it potentially. If this were to go through, and this is what could happen, a plan that is in place is we could put a six-court tennis court facility on what the current junior varsity soccer field slash practice field looks like. And that's at the entrance of the main entrance of the high school at six forty South Fifth. The reason why we chose the six tennis courts is for our physical education use, first of all. Six courts will allow for more participation in classrooms or in our classes. Also, it will allow us to host high school tennis matches, invitationals. Further down the line, if we were to implement a girls' and boys' tennis teams, it would allow us to host WIA regional and sectional events. It would allow us for a lot of community use because this would be a major player in town for tennis courts. Right now, there's only a couple tennis courts down at the park. We all know the condition of those. And this, this would be a major player for our community to use. Also, it would be a potential youth camp site for, for younger generations to use our facility. So that's kind of the reasoning behind the six tennis courts as opposed to four, or two, or five, or, or so on. Also, in one of the board documents, you will see that the diagram allows, you will see that the diagram does allow for a six tennis court facility at that space right at the entrance of the school. Again, that diagram is just to show a layout of what could take place if we were to put something on that site.
And Kendall, is it fair to assume that in, in between those sections of three, there would be viewing sections like bleachers?
There would be viewing sections on that cement slab as well as on the end of each court as well. So we take away a soccer field, a practice field. Then the thought process is, where do we go next? And so the next conversation is to, since we want to kind of, one of the major benefits of our campus in my eyes is everything is on our campus. Everything is here. So we take a soccer field away. We want to add a soccer field. So what would that look like? Is that would look like synthetic turf facility being added in what is the current football stadium? So that football stadium would then be a dual-purpose football-soccer synthetic turf facility. And that would get, go away from our natural grass facility, which we have now. The reason being is, again, we want to keep everything on campus. One of the big draws for our students is that for practices, for games, everything is centrally located. So that's, that's why we would do the synthetic turf. Also, unlimited turf time. On one of the board documents in your packet, there's a natural versus synthetic turf facility usage chart. This will affect, this will have a positive effect on many of our students. And many of our students, not just at the high school level, but K-12, would be able to potentially use a synthetic turf field for PE classes, also for band, for baseball softball. Now, you may, you may question why baseball softball. Well, a lot, there are a couple school districts in our conference that are switching to synthetic turf baseball softball fields. This would allow our baseball softball teams to practice on our synthetic turf in the spring to get ready for playing on a synthetic turf field. Our cheerleaders and POMs teams can have practice on the turf, obviously, since it's a football-soccer complex, our football-soccer teams. But then also, one of the, one of the things that I'm most excited for is the chance of our youth sports to be able to use a synthetic turf field playing underneath the lights. As a former, former coach, it's always been a goal to have youth sports use our high school, use our facilities that the varsity athletes play on. And this would allow us to do that better than a natural grass field. And then the current varsity soccer field, then as a result, would then be used as our JV practice or a secondary soccer facility to allow us to host soccer invitationals, multi-team soccer invitationals on both fields. And then also the natural versus synthetic turf. The synthetic turf would allow us to host WIA regional and sectional football and soccer events, which the WIA is leaning more towards sites with synthetic turf as those tend to offer a better playing surface later in the fall than a natural grass field that has been weathered and played on throughout the fall. Also, in one of the board documents, there's a possible fundraising chart. I took this fundraising chart directly from Lodi High School and their fundraising events. We could potentially do something like this. But again, those numbers and those years were taken strictly for, from the Lodi High School website. With the stadium naming rights for ten years, I think they were smart because the, in doing that for ten years, because that comes up right when, when the synthetic turf may need to be resurfaced. So the naming rights come out, and maybe that whoever gets those stadium naming rights, they would re-up. Or maybe we would look elsewhere, or we could look elsewhere for stadium naming rights just to, to keep, again, we're looking at, this would all be privately funded. Again, it wouldn't be a, a fund ten, or it wouldn't be funds from the school district. This, we could potentially fundraise for this. And that's why the naming rights is so crucial. The, the expected life expense, expectancy of a, of a synthetic turf field is between ten to fifteen years. Kimberly High School right now is going through a reconditioning of their field. They got fourteen years out of it. So it's just, and, so the estimated cost is further down. A six-court tennis court facility would be around six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. Our synthetic, our dual-sport synthetic turf field would be around seven hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand. And then they say a resurfacing for it, for that dual synthetic turf facility would be half of the original cost. So that's, that's where we would be for the amounts. So that's where we would be for the amounts. So again, this is a plan that could happen, providing, as a result of the school board's approval of the nomination.
The bleachers or whatever for the tennis courts, is that included in the cost?
Ah, yes.
Six to eight hundred?
Yep, yep. And also, we, those are bleachers that could be moved from inside. Those may be bleachers that we have currently at the high school here as well.
I've always been told that soccer cannot play on a crowned field. And I remember the football field is crowned. Is that going to be a problem, or?
No, so part of the, the synthetic turf is, the crown would be wiped off the football field. So all synthetic turfs are flat. So the first stage of putting in the synthetic turf would be a soil sample, obviously. But then upon, they would level it out prior to putting the synthetic turf field on, in the stadium. So it would not, it would not be crowned anymore. It would be a flat, leveled.
That would wipe off the watering system and put in it.
Correct. Yep, yep.
What does regular maintenance look like for the turf field or for the tennis courts?
Yeah, so, great question. So right now, natural grass, the cost to maintain a natural grass field is around twenty-five thousand dollars per year. And that, I mean, that includes the painting and the lines and et cetera. It's about three thousand to five thousand dollars per year to maintain a synthetic turf field. Again, that, that cost, though, could be negotiated into the price of the synthetic turf field. So again, that, that would allow us to, we could either do the maintenance ourselves or negotiate that into the price of the company for synthetic turf.
At twenty-five thousand dollars for grass, is that our actual cost, or is that just an?
That's an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an estimate of.
Do you have an estimate on upkeep on the tennis courts?
Oh, I do not.
And the fifty percent cost of resurfacing after ten years, they're guaranteeing that price? Or can we expect inflation to knock that up in ten years?
Um, I, it's.
Yes, yes.
I mean, really, and think about just all of the shortages there have been in supply chain, right? I just read an article today in the WASD update that, I don't want to cite the wrong district. I want to say Fond du Lac, but it might, sorry Fond du Lac if it's not you, but that they were facing some supply chain issues as they were installing their synthetic turf field. So it's kind of the reality of right now.
Yeah, and there's a lot of ways, there's a lot of ways that we could pay for that resurfacing. For example, some school districts are Lowdy with the naming rights every ten years. But also, there's going to be a lot of communities, neighboring communities, as well as Evansville community members that want to use this facility. Some school districts have been using their reservation fees to be placed into a separate account to then resurface every year. So then it's no cost to the school district. They are using reservation fees to pay for the resurfacing.
So I, I love this plan. I think it's, thank you for all the work that you've put into it. It's well thought out. I think it's a goal. I'd love for our students to have this opportunity. I think it affords them a lot of things. I'm struggling with our policy and for the rest of the board. You know, our policy clearly states that we're not to accept a donation if it incurs additional costs or if it creates.
Additional workload.
Additional workload. And I think this project does both of that. If there's a way around that moving forward, like maybe surveying a referendum question, possibly, I'm just, you know.
Well, we know we will have to go for an operating referendum in 2024 for sure. And prior to that process, we would have probably a citizens advisory committee and do surveying of the community to see what types of other facilities needs we have or capital maintenance projects, and that the community would be willing to support. That would be a good time to ask questions like that as well, or an opportunity to anyhow.
I, so I would feel more comfortable knowing what the community thought about all of this as well. I attended the city council meeting last night, and there was a city survey done that I'd like the board to see those results, because I'm not part of the city, so. But I would like to see what the community is talking about, what they want, and see, you know, if this would fit in at all. I just don't know, because they didn't really talk about the results. So that's just my two cents on the project. I mean, I love it, I love that, and I would want to aspire to it. I'm just stuck on that policy.
Lowdy was mentioned, and I was at Lowdy for a basketball tournament. It's right next to the high school. You can't miss it, and it looks, it looks really nice when you pull it in, too. I mean, it just, just, I don't know, it feels like it sets it apart a little bit, a little bit more, too. You know, when you pull it in, you see that, oh, wow, okay. And then you go inside, and they have a very nice facility overall. But you see that right when you walk in, it's like curb appeal, so.
And they are the Blue Devils, that's what.
They're also.
Is this, or would this project be in opposition to the pool people that want a pool? Or could, if it's two separate questions, what would the people pick? Unknown. Could it be combined as a referendum question for athletic facilities and a pool? Because you could have swim team then, and depending on seating, you could have WIAA sectionals, regionals. I don't think we're big enough to host the state swim, but it's an outside possibility.
Well, and again, I think what Lori said, and I was involved in the CAC with the last referendum, and that would be, I'm sure, a huge discussion to talk about how to question, you know, with a facilitator and, you know, what, how you want to propose that. Because I'm, there's strategy to that, right, you know, so.
Well, I also appreciate all the hard work that you put into doing the research and stuff on this. This is, this is such a beautiful vision. But again, I also am stuck on the policy. And the policy is, policy says any additional incurred expenses, this is like thirteen to seventeen times the amount of the donation for simply the cost of the facilities. We're not even talking about the maintenance costs. I believe from what Kendall has told us that there's some savings to be had about going to turf versus the maintenance costs. But still, there's going, I mean, the ten-year to fifteen-year renovation cycle is very expensive also. So, you know, every ten to fifteen years, we'd have to look at another nearly half million dollars for just the football slash soccer field. So all of that stuff put together is, this is a big question to put to the community. This is not something that we as a board should go into because we have generous people in the community that gave us a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, you know? So, yes, am I happy that we have those people in our community? Yeah. But we, at this time, we are facing so many, so many obstacles just to continue offering the programs that we have. I just can't wrap my head around doing it at this time.
One of the things, too, would be, we're talking, you brought the idea of naming rights and that sort of thing was brought up with regards to athletics specifically. But there's nothing to say that some of those advertisement options couldn't be also used to fund academics also, right? It came up as part of that, but, you know, depending on how that, how that looks, it's also a possibility, depending on what that structure looks like.
And we do, just this past Monday, at Policy Committee, reviewed an existing sponsorship packet that was created. Melissa, I think you were involved in that, right, back in 2016? And we'll need to revise it.
Yes.
The middle school gymnasium has since been upgraded, right? So we have some work to do, and it also just details very well the structure that you put together in this plan. So that will be summer work likely. But I think the timing is right, because, you know, that packet addresses athletic facilities, the performing arts center, other academic type areas.
Classrooms, technology.
Exactly.
What are the safety issues and injury issues of grass versus synthetic turf? And thinking real far out here, what would a lawsuit, if somebody got hurt or something, be an additional cost?
I don't think the surface would impact the lawsuit. I mean, the district has insurance for those types of things. I think the question that you originally posed is a really good one. I'm sure, Kendall, you could speak to that, kind of safety issues, things with, especially we think about concussions, right, or especially when we're talking about football and other injuries. Can you just talk a little bit about?
So there's actually, when the synthetic turf field gets put down prior to the synthetic turf, there's actually a pad that goes underneath. And then that's what's tested every year, is the Gmax levels or how hard or soft the turf is. And so that's a big indicator as well of when our surface needs to be replaced. So, and our athletes right now, they also play on synthetic turf in other schools, other school districts as well. So as opposed to your lawsuit, I don't, I don't think the surface would factor into that. And the synthetic turf, where the padding goes down underneath, and then the synthetic turf system gets put on top, that is pretty, pretty safe for concussions as well.
So you're not noticing any increase in injuries when our students play on turf versus when they play on our?
No. In fact, as a, as a former coach, and our soccer team actually this fall played at Lowdy, and they love it. Majority of our students love it, so.
Well, it's more consistent, too. You don't have to worry about how it's cut.
For sure.
You know, I mean, it's the same every time.
That's what's exciting about it, right? I mean, that's why, you know, Thursday, when we had our agenda meeting, I was like, all right. You know, and then it was like, reality set in when you start talking about the amounts and going to referendum, and, you know, that's the priority for me, is getting that referendum passed. And I just don't want anything potentially competing with it. That's just me personally. And then the policy that's hanging out there.
Well, and the thing that excites me about this possibility is it benefits more than just our high school students. I mean, this is going to benefit our community. This is going to benefit, you know, all of our students K through twelve. So that's, that's what excites me about this possibility.
Absolutely, that's kind of what I was going to say was, I can understand, you know, what you're saying about policy, and, you know, we definitely have to be following that. Like this could potentially bring in lots of new families. I mean, this is, you know, something that can help our numbers, so. Yeah, I think I'm very excited about this. Thank you for all the work that you put into this. This is, you know, great going forward, so we just have to see how that's going to look.
Anything else for Kendall? Thank you.
Thank you, I'm always here if you have any questions, too. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Kendall. All right, our next item is school to career life programming.
All right, well, I am super excited to talk about this topic. This is a topic that is probably one of the top three things for which I have passion for. I think the timing tonight is fortuitous. We, as you all know, are immersed in a strategic planning process. One of our key words in that process, in our mission, has to do with contributing, our learners being contributors. One of our collective commitments that we are likely to commit to is trying to find new creative ways to ensure that our students become career and life-ready. As you remember, we, in partnership with the Dane County School Consortium, were able to hire Linda Gard, who I'm excited to introduce to you in person tonight. Linda, in seven short months, has been very busy. And I'll let her talk about some of the things that we've done and what we've accomplished. So I'm super excited. I'm going to turn it over to Linda, and I will segue with our next slide here. When Linda was hired, day one, she said, Scott, we, we need to brand ourselves. We need an identity. And this is the first thing I'm thinking of, is I'd like to create something in collaboration with our business and marketing department. I said, all right, go nuts. And so Linda worked with our business department at the high school and some students, and we created this. I will turn the rest of the presentation over to Linda. I'm going to pipe in here and there, but without further ado, Linda, it's all you.
Hi, thanks for asking me. It's a privilege to be here and talk about this passion of mine, so, thanks Lori for inviting us. So like Scott said, a couple of Mandy Fergan's marketing students developed this logo for us. She did a logo contest when I first started, and I think it turned out really nice. And we're using, we have a separate logo for apparel that we're going to start ordering, some shirts and whatnot, just to kind of brand our CTE department over at the high school. But I just wanted to share this, because I think it's a pretty quality, high-quality logo that two high school students created for us after I just gave them, you know, some very simple instructions, and this is what they came up with. So all of our CTE teachers are hopefully using this on their email signature. And it's just a nice thing to put on letterhead and things like that to brand our CTE department at the high school. So it's kind of what that, what that's all about. So we'll talk a little bit about the work-based learning overview at the high school, our youth apprenticeship program, numbers that we're completing this year and what I'm looking at for next year. I've been very, very busy. I'll talk a little bit about the certifications, the CTE incentive grant, just to give you a background of how we are always trying to improve programming in the CTE department, and then some goals that I have for 22, 23. And then Scott will probably finish up a little bit with some future opportunities that we've been meeting as a group over the last couple of months about what we, our vision for the future for, for CTE programming at the high school. So currently, the high school has two work-based learning programs. And, I mean, I don't need to read this, but we also, we currently have the co-op program at the high school, which has been around since I was in high school. I was in the co-op program when I was at the Evansville High School. So we currently still have that. It's important to state for everyone here that our current local co-op program is a non-certified program with DPI. There are certified state co-op programs, but that's not something that Evansville High School currently has. Not saying that we can't grow into that, but currently, we have a local co-op program that's non-certified. So that's important to note. The other work-based learning program, program that I'm responsible for is the youth apprenticeship program, which is a work-based learning program sponsored by the Department of Workforce Development. That is who we work with Dane County School Consortium for. We are, you know, grateful that we're being, that we're a member of that consortium, because it just opens up a lot of doors for us at the high school and provides our students and families with a lot of opportunities. So the work-based learning program for the youth apprenticeship program, because it's certified, is for current juniors and seniors. Three basic requirements of the program in a nutshell is they have to work a requirement of four hundred and fifty hours a year. That's a calendar year, that's not necessarily a school year. They can work many more than that, but they have to work at least four fifty to complete as a Level One or as Year One. They earn one point five credits per semester that they're in the youth apprenticeship program. They earn a workforce development industry certification, which I'm going to explain a little bit more in the coming slide. They, there's many different opportunities for them. There's eleven different program areas under the youth apprenticeship umbrella. They all focus on the sixteen. They all focus on the sixteen career clusters. Students have to choose one of the programs and specifically a pathway. So there's a lot of counseling that goes on um for the majority of students. I have very few students that come in and say they wanna do this. But after um developing that relationship with students and doing some career exploration with them, they um they usually can decide on a pathway. And a lot of that depends on uh job opportunities as well for students. Um they also have to take concurrent related coursework while they're working for each semester. If the students have exhausted the coursework that we offer at the high school, then I go outside the high school. That's when I start looking at Madison College or Blackhawk Tech or Destination Careers Academy or um Ingenuity or Jedi or anything that I can get my hands on um for the students to have related coursework to support their job, um because it is a requirement. So that's uh the nice part about Dane County School Consortium or one of the nicer parts is that they offer um several concurrent uh coursework um opportunities for students in all the high schools that are part of the consortium, especially for some of the smaller high schools that don't have as many or aren't able to offer as many CTE um courses as maybe the bigger high schools that are in the consortium. So that's really the Youth Apprenticeship Program in a nutshell. The local co-op program is just for seniors. Um they have to work a minimum of ten to fifteen hours a week. Um there's classroom components, I can't speak directly to those because I'm not, I don't manage that program this year. That's uh Jim Qualheim and Mandy Fergens. Um and they earn one credit per semester and they um have to enroll in it for the year, their senior year. So um that's kind of the difference between the local non-certified co-op program and the Youth Apprenticeship Program. And um they're both called work-based learning uh programs at the high school.
So Linda, before you go on, can you or maybe Scott, talk about the advantages of the certified co-op program?
Sure, the students uh that complete the YA program earn a certificate from the Department of Workforce Development. So of course, that is um huge, put on college applications, resumes, um you know, whatever that student's journey looks like in post-secondary or after high school. Um the youth apprenticeship um positions have to be paid. Um they are um not your typical high school jobs. These are career-based jobs where these students are earning a a good wage. So they, there is a um kind of a hidden or kind of like a silent expectation of a of youth apprenticeship employers that of what they're paying the students. So it's usually anywhere from about twelve dollars an hour all the way up to twenty dollars an hour, depending on the program that they're in. Um it's it's really um for the student to earn that certification from the Department of Workforce Development. Um in the trades, those students that complete, uh let's say as a plumber, electrician, HVAC, um carpentry, masonry, whatever it is that they are doing, if it's trade-based, um as a youth uh youth apprentice, if that employer continues to take them on and offers them um continued employment as a regular apprentice in let's say the plumbing apprenticeship, they have either one to two years done of that regular apprenticeship program as a high school student. So electrical apprentice, I believe, is four to five years if they were going to start it after high school. If they do the electrical youth apprenticeship program as a junior and senior in high school, they have two years of that four to five years done. So that's kind of the goal of the Youth Apprenticeship Program is to get these students um transitioned over to the regular apprenticeship program for the programs that are in the trades.
And you can kind of think about the state co-op versus the local co-op is somewhere in between the YA and the local co-op. So the state is just kind of a slightly higher level of hours of expectation. They get a s- uh certification. A- and we have, it, we've we've toyed around with the idea of do we want to migrate all of our local co-ops to the state co-ops and and kind of the pros and cons with that? And it's something that we've considered and will continue considering. Um but but I do think the greatest benefit for kids is the um the youth apprenticeships. And um I'll, we we can talk a little bit, I think on the next slide, we'll talk about um our the numbers of the kids that we had in youth apprenticeship. And uh when Linda's position was hired, um you may remember me stating that our hope for this year was to have three kids to be youth apprenticeship completers. And our very aggressive goal for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year was to have twelve students. Uh and I'll let Linda talk a little bit about where we're on pace eventually, uh where we're gonna get to, uh cause I I think we're gonna supersede those numbers as well.
Yeah, I wanted to add about the difference between the the local co-op and the youth apprentice. The youth, the youth apprenticeship work-based learning is kind of really the capstone work-based learning program in high schools. Um the co-op program is very valuable as well. Um I've met with all fourteen students that have signed up for the local co-op program next year, personally have had uh meetings with them. And the nice thing about having both of these work-based learning programs in the high school is that the co-op program provides a little more flexibility for students to leave their sen- senior year to go to work. Um it really um is helpful for athletes because a lot of times your athletes cannot um fit a youth apprenticeship job into their busy lives. Um I always, you know, youth apprenticeship is kind of like the student's sport in a lot of different ways because they're working ten to fifteen hours a week. Um so the nice thing about the co-op, after I talked to students, is like, you know, you've got a great job. That's a very valuable job, it's working towards your um career goals or you know, you're getting some good experience there. The co-op would just be a better fit for you. It gives you more flexibility to do your sports, to be a preseason athlete, whatever the case may be. Um and still um, you know, earn money, do some uh work-based learning skills and it's just not quite as rigid and doesn't have the expectations as the youth apprenticeship program does. The youth apprenticeship students, I go out on job sites, evaluate every student three times a year. Parents have to be at the meetings, I have paperwork to fill out, I have to send everything to the state. Um it's very um, it's very documented and um just kind of um a little bit higher expectations on my part and what the students um, student's role is as well. And the mentor that is um, that is uh, you know, the youth apprentice's mentor in the j- in the, at the job. So w- you know, we have a really good thing going with the two different work-based learning programs because it does offer opportunities to a lot more students that might not necessarily be able to fit under the youth apprenticeship umbrella. So just kind of wanted to add that and and.
Yeah, that's a good distinction.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, so I, you know, and I always keep notes on the students that I work with and if something changes in their, you know, busy high, busy high school schedule and we can move their position into a youth apprenticeship position, then we do that. But if it doesn't, if it's best for them to stay in the co-op program, then that's a win-win too, so.
Sorry, I, the thing that struck me when I read through all these materials is that it seems like they get so few credits for all the work that they're doing. Is that a defined thing through statute or is that something that the?
Uh it's a, it's a district decision, but I can tell you that the recommendation from the Dane County School Consortium is one credit per semester. So we are actually giving them a um at, an additional credit for the year at the Evansville High School. And that's, you know, that was the the high school's decision to do that. So the guideline from Dane County School Consortium and most other high schools that I um, that are in the consortium, they they give um one credit per semester.
Seems like so much investment in their time and their effort.
That's, that's where our committee um, and and this is, you know, also juxtaposed with like the Lowdy Committee and there's just lots of committees where they're all interrelated. A- and that was our belief too. We said, if we, if we want this to take off and be a primary mechanism to get kids connected to post-secondary life, uh we felt very strongly we had to up the uh the credit ante a little bit.
I'm glad to hear you did that, but.
Any other questions on this slide?
Yes, so um I do appreciate your explanation because I was wondering how the, you know, the, the difference was between the youth apprenticeship and the co-op. But I also heard you saying that you're not the one that's in charge of the co-op? That that's Mandy Fergens and um Mr. Qualheim, is that true?
Correct.
Okay, but it's nice to hear that you're already, you know, also meeting with those students. So I think that's great, cause you have those connections and then if something changes.
Yeah, I met with them, I talked to Mandy and Jim all the time. Uh we have a shared document of my notes and um, you know, there were some students that signed up for co-op that I did move over to youth apprentice after talking with them. And then some we've left at the co-op um in the co-op class for next year. So um it's kind of a team effort between the three of us. So they're doing some different things that I'm doing, but we're all, you know, basically um helping kids with the work-based learning.
Exactly, that's so great to hear. Um I think my uh one question then would be uh for the co-op part of it. Um you were saying that that's something that um the youth apprenticeship has um uh estate-based?
Mm-hmm.
But then you were said that the co-op could be state-based, would then it, would it become the youth apprenticeship then? Or would it still be a state-based co-op?
It's a state-based co-op.
Well, I'm, maybe I miss um heard that earlier or missed it, but wh- how is that?
So that is not sponsored by the Department of Workforce Development. So it's not really coming from the industries and the and the employers. That is a DPI um state local, state certified program. So there's a little bit different, difference uh, different agenda from DPI versus DWD.
Okay.
You know, but um so there's a, you know, the expectations, I think the hours are a little bit less um that they have to work. There isn't the related coursework piece. Um there has to be a co-op class that has to be taught by, I believe, a licensed um teacher that has that specific uh teaching license.
Okay.
Um so it's, you know, it's a work-based learning program, but it's not sponsored by the same department. It's DPI versus DWD type of thing, so.
So Anne, what you're doing is you're scratching at the surface of probably the most complex um high school programming option. We we haven't touched on career pathways and career clusters and regional pathways and local pathways. This is a super convoluted world and Linda's doing a nice job keeping this at ten thousand feet. But it it gets very complicated, especially when so much of what we do is really governed by uh Wisconsin DPI. And now when you bring the Department of Workforce Development into play, um and and these two worlds don't really speak well together because you would think that if you had a student with, and all of our students have state IDs, you would think that once they graduate, that ID then could be connected to to a post-secondary life through Department of Workforce Development, cause you might wanna say, well, how about four years after high school? Can we look to check on employability of our graduates? And and of course, these two worlds don't speak to each other. So it, someday, someday, we have a dream that they will, right? Cause when we talk about um another component of a Carl Perkins Grant, which has a graduate follow-up survey, which is another complicated thing that we do, we have to manually make phone calls to graduates to try to track them down and ask them what they're doing to fill out this federal reporting. I I'm, I I have faith, I have hope that someday these two worlds are gonna speak, make all of our lives better because if we're truly serious about post-secondary outcomes, we we have to have fluidity between these two worlds. Uh someday we'll get there. Um but but Anne, I appreciate your questions and I, if if we wanted like a four-hour board meeting some night in this town. It is, it is.
It is, it is really complicated. And you know, just to add to the different, to the co-op versus the youth apprentice, um the local certified co-op program, a lot of smaller districts use because they don't necessarily have that related coursework piece, which is, which is, you have to have that. So that would look like, you know, a student that, um let's just say for example, a student that's doing the CNA program under the youth apprenticeship umbrella. Okay, they get their CNA certificate so they can be in the program. They're working at a facility or a hospital or clinic or what, whatever it may be. Um their related coursework for each semester could be um anatomy and physiology. We're fortunate enough that we offer that at the high school, okay? So a lot of districts don't have that class. So then you're looking at, okay, what related coursework pertains to that job? Because it has to be relevant to their work. Um so the local co-op doesn't have that related coursework piece and it just gives um sometimes uh high schools more flexibility. And um and allows them to offer a work-based learning program to more students than they might not if they only have like the youth apprenticeship programs, so. There's, you know, they're both great programs. There's just, they just kind of serve different populations of students for multiple reasons.
Yeah, different needs, thank you so much.
Well, I would like to throw out there too that there are systems that track graduates. So if they can never talk to each other, which is probably a distinct possibility, we could also just track our own students.
It comes at a cost, of course, but.
There there is clearinghouse, it's a filter you can do.
Yep.
Is there any cost to the student for enrollment or tools if they're in the electrical field?
None. We pick up.
District picked that up or?
Yep. And I'll tell you how we um, how we kind of recoup some of that cost in a couple of slides. But yeah, there's no cost to the students, which is why it's such a great program because, you know, they, you know, if they have any inkling of what they possibly want to explore or do after high school, do it as a high school student when it's not costing them anything. Because there are students that will do the CNA program or they'll do the electrical program or engineering program or what have you. And they'll decide at the completer meeting that, nope, not going there, not really liking this. So that's as valuable for that student as a student that's being picked up as a regular apprentice by J- by Findor, if that's the case, because that student found out before they got to college or, you know, applied for jobs after high school or went into the military or whatever it looks like for that student. Um they found out what they didn't wanna do and that's as valuable of a lesson for high school students as what they, you know, of of a a positive or, they're both positive experiences, but um, you know, just a different outcome, but they're both very valuable. So the students that enroll in work-based learning, um they have to be a junior or senior um to apply for uh both programs. Uh seniors for the co-op program, junior or seniors for the youth apprenticeship program. They can, they're applying right now. Um I've been taking applications since March. Um after I do my recruitment efforts in Janu- in December and January, parents have to attend an informational uh meeting in February. That's one of the requirements to apply. Um and so I've been constantly taking applications uh for students to do the program next year. Um junior students can start their youth apprenticeship program as early as spring before their junior year. So I've already got students with jobs that are, were were signing the paperwork and they're going to start working um full-time this summer after school gets out. Um if students already have a paid work position, that might connect them to a work-based learning. I get students that way too. Somebody will come to me and say, hey, did you know, uh, you know, John's working up at the bank? And I'm like, no, I didn't know that. So I'll call John in, I'm like, hey, do you know about this program? And we have a conversation and then I reach out to their emplo- their employer and I'm like, is this something that we could make happen? And usually it does. So a lot of times um I'll get students uh into the program that way. They've already got a job that falls under the youth apprenticeship umbrella or the co-op umbrella. And I'll get students um enrolled in the program that way. So that's another um, a lot of it is kind of word of mouth and just getting the word out there of what a work-based learning program is. Um so students talk to me, they talk to um both uh the counselors at the high school. It's very nice where I'm located over at the high school. We're all like right across, you know, we're like in a triangle in the Student Services Office. So um we're always meeting with students and a lot of times we'll overhear, you know, each other's conversations and we'll pop into their office and say, oh yeah, I've got some information on that. So it's a great setup for um, for us to be so uh close together in Student Services because we all can brainstorm and um, and students are kind of, you know, we can just work as a team better because we're also in, you know, so close. And um I think that just really helps with um, you know, getting the word out for the program and helping the students and the parents. So the youth apprenticeship, this year, um again, we do the youth apprenticeship program through the Dane County School Consortium. Josh Fassel is my um supervisor up in Madison. I go to a monthly meeting the second Thursday of every month and I meet with the other seventeen school-to-career coordinators. Um it's a great uh organization. I uh used to do this job in Verona, I was part of the consortium when I was over there. And um it's just a wonderful, we have a ton of resources. I can email any of the other school-to-career coordinators if I have a question. Um it's really um, we're very, Evansville's very, very fortunate to be a member of this consortium because of the resources and the opportunities that they provide for our students um and the support that they give me um at the high school um to promote the program and to uh, you know, just get kids on their way in this program, so I.
I just wanna jump in, Linda, and just mention, you know, it was about a year ago today, we invited Josh to come down here and to be with our team of high school counselors. Our um, I think uh Jim and Mandy were present and we were just brainstorming, how do we grow our YA program? How do we grow our school-based um learning, our work-based learning? How do we grow these these programs? And so he he came down um and brainstormed with us and he said, you you guys have to get some type of person to help coordinate this. And so we just brainstormed further and further and he said, wh- what if the consortium were to fund half the position? Do you guys think you could do it? And that's, it was at that moment we were like. And that's, it was at that moment, we were like, okay, now we're cooking with gas. Let's get this thing off the ground. And, and, uh, you, you know the rest of the story, right? Um, and, and as I had said, our goal was to have three kids this year, uh, and up to twelve complete next year. And, and Linda's on pace to blow that goal out of the water. Uh, so that's testament to work that she's doing and the connection she's doing. The other thing you don't see and hear from what, where Linda spends her time is, she is so well-connected in this community with employers, and that network is just widely growing and expanding. And, and that, and that's, it's the relationships and the connections is how it grows. Uh, and she's doing phenomenal work in that regard too.
So maybe you're gonna talk about this, but can you remind me what the parameters were on that position? Because I don't remember.
Yeah, so that was a two-year commitment, uh, from the board. So at the end of next, uh, school year would be the end of that, um, of the commitment. And so the, that's the Dane County School Consortium's commitment to funding half of that position, and then the, and we would talk about revisiting that position.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things I think we'll talk about after Linda completes this slide is, w- w- we always try to brainstorm at this level, you know, school always seems to be about expenditures and never about revenues. Um, and this, there is a sliver of opportunity for revenue when it comes to youth apprenticeships, um, from industry's, um, uh, industry certifications that students can complete. And I'll let Linda speak to that a little bit, because I do believe that Linda has also done a phenomenal job in actually procuring some revenue this year for us as well, so.
So just quickly, um, I'm completing seven students this year. Um, uh, the upper-left tractor is, uh, my friend Zach Crable. He is driving, um, works for Klondike Farms, he's in the soil. Um, the, uh, plant science program under the agriculture umbrella. He's in heaven when he's in that tractor, and I just love that picture, so I wanted to share that with you. Um, Kaylee Bowman and Drew Everson are, um, were the two students that came to the annual banquet a couple of weeks ago. Um, Dane County School Consortium does an annual recognition, recognition and, um, appreciation banquet, always at the end of April up at Monona Grove High School. And they present, uh, the certificates to each of the completers for the year. And, um, that's a picture of Drew and Kaylee, um, in front of the, in front of the backdrop of the youth apprentice, all the different youth apprenticeship programs that students can do. Kaylee completed as a CNA, she was working at Cedar Crest. Um, she has chosen not to continue her employment there. She has, uh, been accepted into the nursing program at UW-Madison, and she is on her way to Madison after graduation to, uh, secure employment at UW Hospital. And she's already, um, sent in her application and has a few interviews up there. So she's super excited to get to Madison.
When her mentor at the banquet spoke to her, uh, about her, and it was really, really touching. So, uh, it, it, it's pretty neat to see how a youth apprenticeship is now likely going to put her into a really prominent career where we need people.
Um, Drew, uh, was in the YA or is in the YA informational technology, um, program. He actually is an employee of the Evansville Community School District. He works with Griffin and Mr. Martin. And, uh, he's been taking college coursework at Madison College, earning another industry certification this spring semester, and he's been working very hard doing that, plus all of his other things he has going on. And he is, um, Madison College-bound for IT work. So he, um, he is gonna be above and beyond, and it's gonna be super employable when he gets out of high school, um, once he, uh, relocates to Madison, or whatever he decides to do after high school. Uh, Nate Garville is down in the left corner. He, um, is one of my newer youth apprenticeship students. He's been taking online coursework in heavy equipment operator in the pre-apprenticeship program at Destinations Career Academy since fall. Um, he just landed a great job, uh, with a, um, construction company in Waukesha. He has moved to Waukesha. He, um, has, is renting an apartment. He started work there two weeks ago under the youth apprenticeship umbrella. Um, he's making, um, I don't know, forty-six dollars an hour, forty-four dollars an hour as a youth apprentice in heavy equipment operator. Um, he will complete as a YA student, um, by August first, um, if not sooner. And then he will continue on his schooling with the organization in Waukesha and, um, and continue to earn his regular apprentice in heavy equipment operating. So, um, he, he has really, um, I, I've never had a student, um, in the heavy equipment operating apprentice. So Nathan and his mom, um, Sue Ann, who works at the high school, they have done a fantastic job of advocating and finding these opportunities. And he has kind of set the bar for, um, additional high school students, because I've learned as much from him going through this program as, as probably what he has, because he's been my first heavy equipment operator, and that, that industry or that, um, apprentice is a little complicated, so. Um, the other picture is Andreas. Um, he is in the electrical program. He's, uh, been working up in Fitchburg at those apartments that are just popping up every single day. They've got like three to four years of work up there with the company that he's working for. Um, it's his dad's electrical company, and he has a different mentor that he works for. He is loving it, and he is gonna continue on and, uh, get his, um, his electrical apprenticeship, um, through the company, and he's got one year done as a high school senior. Um, I also have another electrical student that's completing, Kane Howlett. He's been working with Tom Kunder here in town. He's going to be completing. And then I have, um, uh, Hayden Heiss is down at RNA Heating. He's completing in the HVAC, um, with Connie Arnt, and he's gonna continue his schooling at Blackhawk Tech when he finishes his hours this summer and continue on with RNA Heating. And, did I cover them all?
Seven.
Seven. Gonna be harder next year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, next, next year.
Sure. I think you might have a list in front of you. So, um, and, um, I'm proud to say that that number jumped to twenty-two later today, um, but I currently have twenty-two applications, um, on file. They've all been approved, they all meet the requirements. I run them through my rubric. They have to have a certain GPA, they have to have a certain attendance rating. Um, they have to have, um, you know, they have to be in good standing with their high school schedule to support them leaving, uh, during the day to go to work. And, um, I've got my work cut out for me, but I can honestly say I've got six of them already, um, hired. So, um, and we've got resumes out all over town. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, this is a really busy time for this position, because I'm completing, um, current-year students, and I'm signing paperwork for next-year students. And so, um, trying not to work all summer, so I'm trying to get it all done by the first part of June. But it's exciting, the kids are, um, it's, it's been busy, but it's been a good busy, because the kids are really excited, and the word is getting out of this program, so. I've talked to about forty kids, um, over the last couple of months, um, and, and twenty-two of them have, have filled out the application, which is, uh, the second step after attending the informational meetings back in February. So I'm very, very pleased. I hope I can get all of them employed.
That's awesome. It's nice to know that you can make six figures, and you don't need a four-year college degree.
Yep. Um, so this is a little bit what Scott was kind of, um, alluding to. The Career and Tech Ed Incentive Grant Program was established, um, in December of two thousand thirteen through the Wisconsin Act fifty-nine. So this is a grant, um, that was, um, started by the state that is, um, that pays school districts, um, money per pupil that earn industry certifications. And it is a, um, you know, it's just a promotional thing. It's a way for, um, schools to be able to recoup some of their costs for some of the programs that they're offering, and a way for them to reinvest in their CTE programming. Um, the per-pupil, um, amount for the students that earn industry certifications is a thousand dollars or less. Um, the last couple of years, it's been around, I don't know, six fifty-seven, I think, a couple of years ago. I'm not sure what it was last year.
Eight seventies?
Yeah, maybe eight. It kind of adjusts depending on how many, uh, students are being reported, because this is a statewide program, so every, uh, almost every high school has found out about this and is taking advantage of it. So, um, it's just a way for us to be able to just keep improving our programming and to offer more industry certifications. The list is extensive. If you just Google Act fifty-nine incentive grant, look on there and see which certifications qualify, you're probably gonna be quite surprised. There's business certifications. Youth apprenticeship is a reportable certification. Um, your local co-op, if it was, um, certified, would be an industry certification. So those are just two. Um, couple of other ones are if they do a program through, um, the technical college, and it's certified, they get an industry certification. So there's many ways to earn industry certifications, and this money that districts are able to claim, um, allows us to just improve our programming, um, and plus it is what the industries are looking for, for, um, employees to hire them. So they're all, they're all certifications that the industries are wanting, um, their, their people that are applying for their jobs to have. So this year, um, we've got, uh, we'll be, this is pretty close to the numbers, I think, we'll be reporting, um, this summer. We've got seven students that will be, um, in the youth apprenticeship program. Um, ten students at the high school have completed the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. I can tell you that Brooke and I have about fourteen students signed up for that course in the fall. So, um, believe it or not, the Certified Nursing Assistant Program is hugely popular, and.
We are even on the verge of offering it in, within the district from an actual instructor. So if you can get to a threshold of enough kids, they'll come here to teach it, which, which we really, really would like to get to, but.
Yeah, and I've been working really closely with Evansville Manor. They are finally certified to offer their clinicals there, which is gonna be huge for our high school students, to be able to do their clinicals in town. Um, and I've, they've, they've been just wonderful, um, offering their support to try to get, um, to try to work towards that possibility of maybe offering the class, um, onsite, so that students aren't having to drive to either Blackhawk Tech or Madison College, depending on where they're going. Um, Mandy's doing a fantastic job with Microsoft Office Specialist. She's got fifteen students that are, um, have earned one or more of the MOS certification. She's got some students that have earned all four. So you can only count the students once for the incentive grant, but she, if you ever get a chance to go to the high school, she's got all their certificates up on her wall outside her door, and it's just, it's amazing to see, because, um, that's a, we're doing kids a huge service by offering that MOS certification class at the high school as a class, because that is the industry standard. Um, and students need to know Microsoft Office when they graduate, because that's what the colleges are using, and it's critical that they know how to use Outlook and Word and Excel.
And that's also a product of some of the internal curriculum we've worked, uh, kind of reworked of less heboarding per se and more industry-standard software use. And tha- and that's where it's morphed, and that's where we've, you know, we, we wouldn't have even had any kids get a certification two years ago.
Alex, didn't you get one of them?
Yeah, I sent both.
Yeah, I got certified and all four.
All four?
Yes, four. I'm working on my fifth right now.
Oh, wow. So they can probably speak better to it than I can, actually, in the class. Um, we also offer the firefighter one and the EMR and EMT. I have three students that are going to be doing that next year, so those are also, um, industry certifications. Um, Madison College has a early college, um, fire academy, and they offer the firefighter one certification along with emergency medical responder and emergency medical technician. And, um, lots of kids are interested in that. It's just a big commitment, because they go up to TruX, um, two, three mornings a week from seven-thirty to eleven-thirty to take those courses. And that just doesn't always work with every student. But the students that come in and know that they wanna do that, we try to plan for that starting their freshman sophomore year, so that we can free up their morning schedule, so they can take advantage of that, um, of those programs. Because, um, for the students that are interested in, um, that type of, um, work, it's a really good deal to get that done as a high school student. The phlebotomy, I have two students taking the, um, phlebotomy course this, uh, spring. They're doing it in the evenings up at Goodman South Campus through the Madison College. So they will earn their phlebotomy, um, certificate and be able to go get a job as a phlebotomist. So they are having fun with that. And then the comp, TIA, is the vendor that offers the A-plus certification. That's an IT certification that is industry, um, certified. That's the one that Drew Eversen has been working on. Um, he's been going in-person and taking an online course all semester to earn that. So that's kind of the numbers that we'll be, uh, reporting, um, this summer for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two gr- uh, graduate industry certification holders. And you can do the math of what that, um, check's going to look like. That's gonna come back to the district from the incentive grant funds.
Hoping it's closer to a thousand than seven hundred per kid.
Yeah.
Either way, it's gonna be a nice check to change.
Either way, it will be.
Some of those apprentice programs, the kids have to have like really specialized tools and stuff. That kind of money could go towards helping provide electrician tools, et cetera, et cetera, for the kids.
Yeah, we, we don't have to do a lot of that, but for the related coursework, if the students are taking college coursework, um, we, we pay for their textbooks. Um, we pay for like any equipment that they may need. The trades, most of those kids are getting that from the employer. You know, they're providing that, so far anyhow. Um, but, um, but yeah, any of that, any of that, any training for a teacher that wants to go, um, get trained to offer like precision measurement instrument is a, is a big one in the tech ed world. We can use those funds to, um, have that teacher go take that training so that they can offer that, that certification, um, learning to the students. So it's always, we're always thinking about what different things we can do to keep promoting, um, the industry certifications in our high schools, so it's nice to have.
Use those funds to help, you know, support like certain positions that help coordinate all of this and make sure they're sustainable over time, you know, things like that.
Can we get like some blurbs on this stuff out on the, uh, the, uh, Facebook page? This is awesome, I'm just so excited.
Yeah, we had, um, we had one blurb not too long ago, um, which is maybe a good segue into our, oh, one slide too early. I was gonna, I'm gonna segue into, um, into the future, uh, component. We had a blurb about a relationship that we were developing with Blackhawk Tech, and I'll talk about that in two slides.
Um, uh, just go back to that one. Does everyone know who was at our, uh, Junior Career Fair? Can you see who that is standing there? We were so proud to have her. That's Janice Ringhand.
I thought that looked like Janice's smile.
She, um, yeah, she enjoyed it so much. Uh, work-based learning and just everything we're talking about is also a passion of Janice, Janice's, and her and I have had a lot of conversations about it. I'm friends with her, so we have some really good conversations. And, um, I'm just, like I told Scott, I hope that we can, now that she's retired from the State Senate, I'm hoping we can pull her in and use her as a resource for, um, future, uh, projects that we may have going on, um, here at the district, so. She's a great resource to have. She has a lot of, lot of pull in a lot of places, so. So I had to set some future goals, so I thought I would share them. This is part of the Carl Perkins Grant, um, requirements that have to be done every year, and these were the ones that I kind of came up with with the short time that I've been here. I started in end of, end of October, I think it was. So, um, the first one, I would love to start, um, uh, Skills USA chapter here at the high school. Um, CTSO stands for, um, uh, career.
Technical student organization.
Um, currently, we offer FBLA, which is a CTSO, and we offer FFA, which is a CTSO. Um, and I believe those are the two that we offer right now. The Skills USA would just really open up the door for, um, a whole different set of, um, students at the high school, because it is a chapter where students can do different things outside of the classroom. They can compete, or they don't have to compete. Um, it, it does take an advisor, it takes someone to manage the students and to supervise them. But, um, there's the, the opportunities to expose kids to what's out there in the technical educational world is huge for the CTSO. And I think, um, it's probably the best bang for our buck right now if we can get that started, because I think that that will, um, really increase our enrollment in the tech ed classes and just offer more opportunities to, um, a lot more kids in the high school. Increase the YA enrollment. I'm kind of my own worst enemy, 'cause I'm doing that, and I'm super busy, but it's okay, we'll figure it out. I don't know, I'll probably have to clone myself to get to all my evaluations next year, but it'll be good. Um, I'd also like to hold, um, E- um, CTE monthly meetings, um, with the community members. Those are kind of called advisory committees. That's another Carl Perkins requirement, um, in order for us to spend Carl Perkins money. Um, that's not something we're currently doing, and I would like to gently kind of, um, at least take a couple of the CTE departments and kind of like get something started, um, with meeting, if not monthly, maybe every other month, um, just because it is a requirement, and I think those meetings are valuable to bring in the community. Um, I did those in Verona with the Business Department, and I tell you, the people that served on our Business Advisory Committee from the community loved coming. We'd have a slight, you know, we'd have a small breakfast, and they just would bring in. We'd have a slight, you know, we'd have a small breakfast, and they just would bring in all their ideas from the workplace, which we needed to hear. We needed to know what they needed us to be teaching the students and what the students need to be coming out of high school with. Because sometimes we're in our little bubble at the high school, and we don't necessarily always know what's going on out in the workforce. So those meetings are really valuable, and it's a really good way to make connections in the community and build that collaboration piece, because we need the, we need the employers in the community to help us with this program. And then grow the career fair, the junior career fair, I thought was a success this year. I had like sixty people come in and talk about their careers. It was a career fair, it wasn't a job fair. I was very clear with my expectations on that. And I think the kids enjoyed it. We kind of improvised, we had a little extra time. So we called down the seniors, which I think found it valuable as well, made some notes. We're going to continue to grow with how we did it this year. And I also would kind of like to, you know, I'm kind of like throwing the idea around about doing the career fair in the fall and a job fair in the spring type thing. So students can learn about careers in the fall and get the employers in there, where they can hand out their QR codes for all their jobs that they have available in the spring, when it gets closer to graduation. So just some ideas I have, but for the most part, the reception to that, when I started sending out invites, was huge from everybody in Evansville. I couldn't have asked for a better turnout. And everybody, you know, said they wanted to come back. So I felt that that was a good, a good first year of, of planning the career fair. So that's all I have. Any questions on anything I said? Now let Scott finish up with where we go next.
I do have, like, I know for years, our community, well, now I'd call them our partners, but the businesses in the community have been really asking a lot of, when are you going to provide us with boots-on-the-ground-ready kids? Has your reception been really, I mean, obviously, they came to the career fair. In your, in your conversations with what I'd call your partners, are they very enthusiastic about the products that they're getting? Or, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I haven't got, I mean, I've only got the seven students right now working, you know, but I think for the most part, they are. We've kind of, you know, I think the biggest message that I'm hearing from the employers is we need to go back to the basics, and we need to teach soft skills. And that is something that I work on with the students that I manage. I do some exercises with them, and I do some financial literacy and some soft skill lessons with them, because I think that that's probably, you know, it's just, you know, the last couple of years has been difficult for, for a lot of people. And, you know, I just, I kind of listen to the employers, and that's what they're wanting, that's what they're telling me. You know, help students learn how to communicate, help students learn how to respond, help students be on time. You know, help students honor their commitment, those type of things. And they're telling me, we can train these students, you know, to weld, or to plumb, or to, you know, wire a socket, or whatever it may look like. But, you know, we need help with those basic soft skills, or employability skills. And, and that employability skills piece is, I do that anyhow. You know, it's just not documented, but it's things that I talk to the students about all the time. So that's kind of what I'm hearing, and then a lot of that. But that's, that's just not Evansville. That's, that's everywhere. That's like a lot of our conversation at our monthly consortium meetings, is how we can help students, you know, do a resume, you know, send a cover letter, follow up on an interview. Just, you know, really pretty basic things that students don't know how to do, unless you, you know, actually talk to them and show them. So, but, you know, for the most part, the employers are, they, yeah, I, I can't say enough how welcoming and how thankful they are that, you know, that I did the career fair, and that they really feel like some of these training programs are going to be getting off the ground a little bit more, so that they can, we can keep our kids in town to work, because Evansville has a lot to offer. We have a lot of great businesses here in town that, that students don't need to drive to Madison or Jamesville to, you know, to take advantage of. So it's just all about those relationships and connections and collaboration that I try to do so much of. So it just takes a lot of conversations.
So to answer the question of.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and, you know, you've done a tremendous job in a short period of time.
Let's not really work, it's just my passion, so.
And that is absolutely genuine. I would say that about the guard to the T, that she is as excited about this, this world as anybody I know, and it shows. So two things happened this school year that I think were kind of, kind of grassroots, almost serendipitous things. One is Lori was approached very early in the school year by a business owner in town, who is very well-connected with, for an example, this gentleman brought in two people that were high-ranking from a very large farm implement manufacturer and dealer. And, and we just assembled a bunch of people in this very room, and what they had said is, we have money. We want to help teach kids. Like, what if we were able to, you know, bring kids in at some type of thing, where like we could, you know, for a weekend, or for a couple of days, we could teach them how to do, you know, equipment? And, and the message we kept hearing is, we want kids, we want workers, we want them to turn into adult workers, and we have money. And so we slowly had some conversations. And we've always had a really good relationship with Blackhawk Technical College. And they are the technical college system that's within our network, so they're our primary technical college school. Not that we can't also connect with MATC, we do, but Blackhawk Tech would be the first one. And a lady named Katie Lang is kind of our liaison. She's done a nice job, you know, with the Start College Now stuff and kids taking classes. But Kurt had mentioned to me a number of months ago, he listened to a speaker, a guy named Greg Phillips, who, he is the dean at the Manufacturing and Construction Center out of Milton. And he's like, you should just reach out to this guy, he was super interesting. And so I did, and I said, can we come take a tour? And he's like, absolutely. So Greg met us with Katie and a team of two other individuals, and gave us a whole tour of the facility. And, and one of the messages he had said was, Scott, the days of learn then earn are over. He's like, so the days of going to school for two years, and then, then you go get paid and get a job, he said, those days are over. You, our kids, our young adults, will be earning and learning at the same time. And that's the model that they've started to transition to. And they had said, you know, for example, if you'll come pick up your kids, we'll provide some transportation. Obviously, there's some fees associated, but we want to partner with you. What can we do? And they've talked about, you know, their new model, which is like these mini modules for kids. So think of it like maybe a quarter credit, or half a credit here, to learn this thing in manufacturing, to learn this, this piece in construction. So our team, we just kept thinking, we have this group of, of business owners who are saying, we have money. We have this group of educators saying, we'd love to help and connect, and to, we just might need a little money. So we just thought, what would prevent us from being glue that, that these two groups together? So one of the things that we're in very infantile stages brainstorming is kind of using, almost like the alternative education competency, competency model that we use. What if we piloted a handful of kids to utilize a graduation pathway that would connect all of these worlds? So one of the things, we're kind of on the verge, and I'm not going to say too much, because we obviously would need to, to bring more information to the board, once we unveil this, is how do we connect all of these worlds into a very individualized pathway for kids to new and innovative ways, like we're charged to do with our commitment, to find them, to get, to get them to be life and career-ready? So we're, we're ready for some new ideas. And I think we've done some great work this school year, but I'm, I'm excited. I think we've even got some greater things to come. So that's just one area of where I think we need to go. And, and these things just take time, and we have to go slow to get it done right in small groups of students. But that's, that's one of our big steps moving forward. So I look forward to someday, hopefully not too far down the road, to kind of bring that idea back to the board. Very cool. So I, this was, started out to be, Lynda and I talked, we're like, yeah, I think, you know, nine slides, ten to fifteen minutes. So.
Sorry.
So we took a lot more time than we had initially planned. But I, I hope you guys found this helpful and informative. And if you do want to dive into the more complicated world, feel free to reach out. Lynda and I are happy to sit down with you if you want to really, really dig in. And of course, if you have any follow-up questions, we can, you can certainly contact us.
Kudos to everybody involved. I don't remember the last time we had a program that has tripled its enrollment in like eight months, so I feel like that's us in the last six months. That's pretty awesome. I'm very excited about it. I know that our, our community businesses have been just crying out for this forever. And having somebody with all of the connections, like Lynda, to get out there and promote it, and you're going all the right directions.
So right now in Rock County, manufacturing, construction, and health sciences are the three primary areas. Where we think we are going to focus in that little pilot I was talking about was in the manufacturing area. So that's just to, just to give a little bit of taste of where, where our, our kind of minds are at. But we do feel it's very responsive to the workforce demands locally, so not only just in Evansville, but in Rock County as well.
Well, it's not very often you have people say, hey, we have money, can we spend it?
Literally, the words out of their mouth, we have money. And I like spending money, so I'm pretty good at it, so.
I just was going to ask, I heard you talking earlier about the freshmen, that sometimes they have to look at their schedule just to see how it's going to fit in there for, you know, the junior, senior year for this. Just curious, is this something you're also talking to those eighth-grade students about, because they've opened those freshmen?
I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry. There's just, but, but.
In the world of academic and career planning, where all of these things fall, we are, we are very, very passionate about trying to figure out, how do we get this information into kids? But not only kids, but their parents.
Right.
That's another huge piece of this. And the trick is, is that, you know, when you think about eighth-grade students, sometimes they just, they just really want to play basketball next fall. Other times, you'll get fifteen-year-old kids where they can't wait to start working. So, so kind of that, that wide range of just readiness and maturity, and all of those factors come into play. But we know that a big piece of this is that, that large academic and career planning umbrella. And it has to be, we have to do a better job in, in the entire communication realm to get that information into students' and parents' hands.
I remember going around at the career fair, and I knew it was happening. I think we had admin team that morning, and Scott said, hey Lori, can we start admin team a little bit later? We have the career fair. And I said, well, sure, because I want to go to the career fair too. I wasn't expecting to see as many people. I don't know what I had in my mind, but it was the, you know, amazing, the representation from all the different career clusters that were there, military as well. And as I went around, I think I talked to, to our representatives there more than maybe the kids did, right? So speaking to the soft skills, right? Because I could see, just from those interactions, it's hard for kids to go up and initiate a conversation with somebody. Well, Bill was there, right? So that's something like, again, thinking about for next year, how do we help prep our kids? So that they aren't feeling intimidated, and they, you know, have those starting, sent-in starters or whatever they need to just engage, because everybody was just wanting to engage with the students. They weren't as excited to talk to me. However, as, as I went around, so I was just extremely impressed with the representation that was there. And what shocked me, as a, you know, a parent who now has two college grads, and one who's at MATC, the amount of, and I wish I would have kept a tally, the amount of people from all the different industries who said to me, we have money. We have two full scholarships to give to students in this area, and we just can't find kids to take them. And I heard that over and over and over and over again. And so I just thought, see, that's, again, in terms of growing, we, as a parent, and I'm an educator, I didn't know this, right? And so just thinking to your point about eighth-grade families, ninth-grade families, a lot of times we think about this for juniors and seniors, but the more that we grow this, the better we'll get at just getting the word out. Because students, if they have really good academic and career planning, and counseling, and, and a strong mentorship, a lot of our students can be earning wonderful certifications and not paying for it. And what we heard from the people who said they had money is, we'll pay for their college. Once they get in and work for us for a little while, if we want them to get trained further, or go to Blackhawk, or get a further certification, we will pay for it. And so there's nothing, as a parent, there's nothing better to hear, right? And just think of the opportunities for students. So there, there is a lot of potential out there. A lot of it just happens to be, you know, it always seems to boil down to relationships. So huge thank you, Lynda. It's very impressive, what you have put together and done in such a short period of time.
Yeah, one of the things when we debriefed after the junior career fair, that we talked about was better prepare our students for next year, with some lessons to, you know, know how to talk to the, to the professionals that come and want to present their careers. So we've got some nice ideas of how we're going to do that next year. And the other thing that I think is helpful is, I ended up putting all of the youth apprenticeship information in the course guide this year, in the high school course guide, which it hadn't been listed before. So, you know, you're going to have your incoming freshman families looking at that when they're picking their classes. And it was just a small way that I could at least get the word out there at the lower levels, because you really want to, you really want to target these kids when they're freshmen and sophomore. Because if I have a senior that comes to me December of his, his or her senior year and says, I want to do youth apprentice, I'm like, oh, well, you're a little late, but, you know, we'll see what we can do, type of thing. But it's really, you want to get those kids gung-ho about it at the freshman-sophomore level, where they've got a four-year plan put in place that they can do these programs if they choose to, their junior and senior year, and their high school schedules can support that. So it is really about academic and career planning, and we've had these conversations, and we've got some good ideas. And it just, you know, everything takes coordination and time. So we're, I think we've made a lot of nice progress just since I've been here with our conversations and just getting the word out there and getting more, just, you know, people learning about the program more. Because once they learn the language and more about the programs, then you'll get the buy-in, and then everything else will fall into place more, so. Yeah. Well, thank you, everyone. Be sure to let me know if you have any questions. My door is always open, so you can email me or stop by. Thanks again.
The next item is district administrator. I'll, I'll make this really exciting too. Hard to follow that, but I will do so. So here you can see our current mission statement. And on Friday, we'll be getting together with our strategic planning committee to hopefully finalize our draft mission statement that we presented at the last board meeting, which is, all learners thriving, contributing, and belonging. And anyhow, pretty soon, hopefully, after we bring that back and the board approves it, we'll, our slides will start to look a little bit different. But in the meantime, this is our mission, and this is what we live by. And so I just, today, I'm going to focus on the partnership piece, and, and then talk about our learning environment. So two different updates, but they, the worlds come together, I promise. So one is just an update on transportation, and where we are at with changing transportation providers. And then you know that, as you heard from Ashlyn and Alex, that there are committees working on revamping our student handbooks. And you will likely see a change in how the handbook sounds and feels, some of the language that we use. So just in preparation for you seeing those handbooks, this will be an iterative process. It will be something we just get better at every year, as we learn how to kind of represent with our language and put into practice what our belief system is, in terms of just the value of relationships, and how we want to start building relationships and move away from reactionary discipline policies towards more proactive relationship building and social emotional learning. So before I talk about transportation contract, I have to give a shout-out to the Ringhands. I have been in contact with Julie and will be throughout the spring. She will continue to play a pivotal role in helping us transition. And so, of course, you know, it's hard to go through a change when we've had such exceptional service for decades. So we went through a request for proposal process, as we do when we have large bids that are needs to meet for the district. So we went through a request for proposal process, um, as we do when we have large bids that are, um, needs to meet for the district. Um, we had four different reviewers go through a comprehensive matrix that Jamie Morath put together before she left. Um, and the company that came out on top was Go Right Way. Go Right Way is a family owned company that was very compelling to me. It's a large family owned company, um, but I liked that aspect when I'm, when I had the opportunity to meet with one of the family members who is still running the company, um, along with their CEO and some of their operations people and their human resources folks. I, even though it was a Zoom meeting, I got that feel from them, um, and they very much listened to what I had to say. Um, I did tell them, yes, of course, money matters and we'll talk about the contracts. But even more importantly, knowing we will be paying for transportation for me, um, of equal importance was understanding how big of a change this will be for everybody in our community and that transition is going to be crucial. It will have to be very intentional and it will take place, it will probably take up a lot of my time over the summer as, as it will a lot of our district office staff. When we think about, um, connecting our student information system to their routing software and just all of these processes that we haven't had to do before that really touch a lot of different people, right? Our front office staff, Larry and Griffin, Griffin over there, you heard me, uh, will be involved as well, right? There are just a lot of different things when you're going into moving to a new way of doing business. So, um, as I was talking through that with them, I, I think I focused on that, um, as much or more as other aspects of the contract when we went into negotiate. I appreciated how responsive they were, um, and listening to everything that I had to say. So that always bodes well, because a lot of times it is about that trust and, and the relationship. And I do believe that they have every intention of being a very good partner, not only with the district, but with the community. Oh, go back one more. Um, so I didn't include it obviously in the slides, but in board docs, um, I did include a draft of the contract. Uh, we have a five year contract in place. Um, they first came with an offer of a three year contract with a possibility of a two year extension. And through some kind of back and forth, I really, um, do believe, and I think they also are very interested in having a long-term relationship with us, don't want to be changing transportation providers every three years. It's a big change. So I was pleased that they were also willing to take that chance on us. Obviously, there's always language in there about if the relationship doesn't work out for either party. Um, and then in terms of pricing, when you take a look at pricing, we knew there would be a fiscal impact. Obviously, final numbers, we won't know until they take a look at their routing software and we determine how many routes we need. Um, obviously Julie has a really good idea about that. And, you know, there's only so much that we could actually reduce in volume. We don't want to reduce in volume for the sake of reducing, because we don't want children riding on the bus for longer than they would need to. Um, but I would say just at an estimate, I would, I would estimate that we're going to see about a $200,000 increase in transportation costs for next year. And then again, we'll see, um, with however many students need specially designed transportation, numbers can change our 4K routes, et cetera. Um, but I'll pause there. I did include this in board docs and just wanted to make sure I responded to any questions you may have.
I thought it was a very thorough contract and very balanced. I was, I was happy with it.
Did you get? The question that I had was like, so you have a sense for it being approximately $200,000 in addition? Is that like just assuming that the routes remain, that the number of routes remained the same and such like that?
Correct. I, I would say per route, you know, again, this is not with my calculator in hand and not my business manager, best business manager skills right now. But I would say, uh, per route, I would anticipate about 12 to 13,000 dollar increase.
That's what it looked like to me.
Is that going to inclu- include fuel costs or is that going to be a separate part of the contract?
Fuel, the, the district is, um, required to pay for fuel. However, they give us, um, a $1,100 fuel credit per month. And some of those details we have yet to finalize, um, because I also want to have Julie's input in terms of where we have worked and who we've worked with in the past. There could be local community impact, right? If we were to go to a different provider. Um, so all of those details, um, we'll still need to work out, but that's what the costing would be. And then, uh, I will obviously have our legal counsel review it one final time. Um, and there, you know, there might be some other minor things, but in terms of content, there won't be any substantive changes. So normally I don't do this, but I have included this as an action item as well tonight. Um, just given our timeline and the fact that we have been going through this process and getting this relationship off the ground now for a few weeks. And there'll be more, a lot of work that, that needs to take place between now and the start of the next school year.
Thank you for tackling it.
Where will the buses be located? Like where would the drivers go to get the buses in the morning?
So Go Right Way, uh, will, you know, has had conversations with Julie and, you know, are looking to either purchase or lease possibly the land where the buses are right now. So that's kind of another part of why, you know, understanding that we'll have a relationship might help some other dominoes fall as well. Um, but the Go Right Way has also, when they came to visit the district office earlier this week, um, they did ask if they could rent some office space from us so that they would have a hub here. So we looked at, um, kind of that conference room that's adjacent to my office. There isn't a door right now. Or that front, when you come in the, the main entrance, immediately to the right, there is another kind of, it's a very narrow conference room, but it has its own external door. It's an emergency exit right now. Um, they seem to like that front entrance a little bit more. They wouldn't have to come all the way into the office then. Um, and then they would have someplace right onsite. And that makes a lot of sense, because, you know, Kristen Hollitt's our data specialist. She's the one who works with Skyward, our student information system. And there'll be a lot of communication that needs to take place as we start to have their software. And they're very versed in Skyward, which is what we use, um, because they have relationships with many other districts. So, uh, it'll be a lot, it's exciting, but you know, another big piece that I didn't mention as a part of that transition is just what communication will be like to families. Some processes will likely change. Um, we will try to move it within our Skyward. There will be another whole tab that addresses transportation. So we're going to hopefully be able to access all of that and get that information to families electronically and not necessarily have to mail postcards home, um, if we have to, we will as a part of that transition. But that's nice when that software talks to our software. Um, so I'm sure they will help us get that ready. But there will just be a lot of communication that needs to happen over the summer as we make progress.
And will the drivers have an opportunity to apply? Just because I know a lot of the students probably are used to their drivers and some comfort there getting on the bus with that same driver.
And Go Right Way is interested in retaining all of our drivers if possible. Um, so again, pending approval of the contract, that allows them to then start having meetings, more meetings with Julie, having more meetings with the drivers, um, and hopefully retain all of them. Because exactly, the relationship piece makes such a difference. And they know the area, right? And they know when Liberty Street is ripped up and we've got to go a different way and things like that, right? So. Any other questions about transportation? And if you do have other questions after, if you know, if you didn't have time to kind of go through the contract, um, like I said, I'll be sending it off to legal tomorrow pending board approval. And then, um, you know, communicate with you if they saw anything. I don't anticipate any further changes, but I'm also not an attorney.
I just want to echo what you said, you know, that exceptional service that we, that the ring hands provided, so.
I think the first thing that I mentioned during my first meeting with them was, you know, thinking of all the different things that I've experienced this year and all the different times my phone has rung, I have received, knock on wood, zero phone calls about the bus. And I opened with that, because from where I sit, it doesn't get better than that. And that's the standard that the ring hands have set in this community. And that is what I'm hoping that we can continue. So moving on, um, this was not a very good transition. However, it is all about relationships, like Dana said. So, um, kind of changing gears to talk a little bit about, you know, the learning environment component that is in our current mission statement and thinking about our future, um, possible mission statement of, you know, everyone thriving and belonging. And really, if you think about it, and maybe we'll talk about this even as the committee on Friday, you know, when you think about all learners thriving, contributing and belonging, before you can contribute and before you can thrive, you really do need to feel like you belong. And so if you have that sense of belonging, then it leads to social emotional growth, academic growth, et cetera. And then when you are in that space, then you can contribute, um, to others. So, so much depends on the conditions that we create as a school and as a school district to allow students to feel that they can be their whole selves when they come to school. And that's on us, that's on us as the adults who are here creating those conditions. And of course, it's a community. So while we're the ones who set that tone and create the conditions, it's also building a sense of community because we do expect our students to also contribute to that commu- sense of community. Um, and so this is not really new when we talk about a restorative approach to, and I would like to even avoid talking about discipline. I think when we frame the conversation around behavior and discipline, it's kind of a misguided conversation. Because what we really want to talk about is engagement, right? How do we engage students? And then if someone is not engaging, why? Finding out why. If someone does make a bad choice, if someone does act out, or if there is a behavior concern, how do we respond in a way that honors the student's dignity, that addresses the issue that, and that helps repair the harm, um, but without excluding the child? And so for many, many years in the field of education, um, we used zero tolerance approaches, right? To applying disciplinary measures. Or here on the slide, it says exclusionary discipline practices, right? And we still do unfortunately suspend students. Sometimes we do have to talk about expulsion, um, but we want those to be the absolute exception if possible. You know, and we do need to have a code of conduct so that parents and students and staff understand and we're on the same page around what expectations are, right? But if we approach it from that place of what did you do and now what do you, what do you get? It's a very different conversation from what happened, right? What's going on with you? Are you okay? Um, kind of looking for that root cause of what may have provoked that decision in the first place. So this is not even new research. Um, I could just kind of like this graphic, um, but you can see that exclusionary practices like suspension and expulsion have a negative impact on academics, um, on school engagement and on graduation rates. Um, you can see, um, you know, what some of the research will tell you about every time a student is suspended, right? It decreases the chance that they'll graduate from high school. And we want to avoid that. We want to be doing everything we can. If we're talking about children thriving, we want to make sure we're giving them every opportunity to be successful. Um, we also know, there are certain things we do know a lot about in education research is that when you take a look at zero tolerance or exclusionary discipline practices, they're disproportionately applied to students from marginalized populations. Um, and, and that's even as simple as things like dress code policies. When you take a look at who they're applied towards, there's always a gender bias towards girls, especially girls of color. Um, a lot of it has to do with body type. And so this is just something that's been proven over and over in education research and that's completely avoidable, right? It's avoidable when we change our frame around looking to see what you're not doing correctly, um, to creating a sense of community and relationships so that you feel like you can be who you need to be at school. So anyhow, for the past, I would say, for sure, ten, twelve years, restorative practices have come into play in education because we want to take a proactive approach to building that sense of community. And when somebody does think, something that harms that sense of community in our classroom or in our school, we have steps that we can take to help remedy the situation. We can apply a consequence if necessary, but do it in a way where the student still feels welcome back and that we find a way to repair the relationship between the staff member and the student or between the student and the student or all parties involved. Or sometimes even the entire classroom, if something were to happen in ti- in the classroom. So that's, that's kind of in general, like what does it mean? You know, kind of a punitive discipline approach. We focus on the misbehavior, we focus on who's breaking a rule. Um, and when we talk about a restorative practice, the frame is around, um, something harmed our community. Something created a disruption in our sense of community. And what do we need to do? Because you as a member of the community need to be accountable to your community, right? So sometimes there's a myth out there that if you have a restorative approach, there are no consequences or, um, that there's no accountability. But accountability is defined differently, right? So in a zero tolerance approach, accountability is equated with the punishment that's doled out. Um, and in a restorative approach, accountability is created to taking responsibility for and repairing the harm that was done in your community.
Don't you think it's harder for, uh, I mean, surely it's harder for me as an adult, but certainly for young kids to own up what they've done wrong and sit down in a room to people who they wronged and have a conversation, have a civil conversation. I, I mean, as an adult, I don't want to even do that, so.
Right.
I, I feel like that's a, that's a huge consequence. That's a difficult situation to face.
And what we want to do too is build this up proactively. So sometimes when we think about restorative practices, it's after the fact. Where you really get your bang for the buck is when you do this, um, proactively and build that sense of community every day as a part of your classroom routine. Some teachers are already doing that here. They do like a morning meeting. That's a form of community building. Or they'll hold, um, circles. Sometimes you hear about circles in classes and those circles are meant exactly for that, for us to get to know each other. We do things like this at our admin team as the start of our meeting so that we're getting to know each other. And then you build a stronger connection and you're, you're understanding that you're not just another person sitting next to me, right? Like I know who you are and, um, it just creates a stronger sense of community and builds those relationships. So we have a lot of staff members who are very successful at doing this already in our district. When you take a look at our handbooks, there's a little bit of a mismatch. Um, so again, I'll go to the next slide. Um, and this is from the, the visual you see again, this isn't, this is not a new visual. This is a 2014 visual from a report that was prepared by the Scott Foundation in conjunction with NEA um, and with A F T, the American Federation of Teachers. I think I'm missing another association. So there was a large study and kind of guide or toolkit that was put together through these different institutions back in 2014 um, to try to move the whole field of education to this more restorative approach towards, um, I want to say engagement, but towards discipline practices in schools, right? So you can see kind of those five main components of restorative practices. And I'll start at the top right, because I think this is probably the most crucial piece is building healthy relationships between our, the adults and the students in the schools, right? It always revolves, we just heard that from Lynda, right, earlier, that so much of what we want to do always depends on the relationships that we build. And when we think we don't have time to do that, um, because we're, you know, we have to teach things or we have to teach the content, and there are a lot of curricular demands. But when you, when you don't take time to do that, you always pay for it later on, right? So it's an investment. It's always an investment when you're, um, building a relationship. So moving to the left, um, another aspect of restorative practices is to address and discuss the needs of the school community. So like you heard earlier and Ashlyn and Alex too, as I'm presenting or after I get done, I'd love to hear your kind of thoughts about this as you've been, you know, talking about the handbook and on that committee. That is a really great, um, piece of what's been happening on those committees is that you have students and everybody has a different perspective on something about what's really important. This is really important to me, or I think we should include this, or I think we shouldn't. Um, same thing with staff members. Um, and so having that opportunity where we're all sitting around, hopefully in a circle or in a place where we can build that sense of community and common purpose to talk about, what is it that we want our school community to look like, sound like and feel like? And then how does our handbook, for example, represent that? Um, another aspect of restorative practices is to resolve conflict, hold individuals and groups accountable. So like you just said, Melissa, when, you know, if I did something and I said something to Ann or I, and, you know, one of the hardest things to do is sit down and recognize and listen to Ann and listen to how that made her feel, right? That, that's a, that's a terrifying conversation to have, but it's something that we should probably all be doing more as adults. but it's something that we should probably all be doing more as adults, right? Even not, this isn't just about students. Um, so there is an aspect always of accountability. But again, what accountability looks like isn't about how many minutes of detention you served. It isn't about how many days necessarily you were suspended. And there still will be suspensions when they're needed. Um, but hopefully when we're building this strong sense of community, all of that starts to diminish. Um, at the bottom, repairing harm and restoring positive relationships, that's also a part of those conversations. And then reducing, preventing and improving harmful behavior. So anyhow, I'm not, I won't read this, the whole slide for you, but, um, this is from that toolkit and from that report. But schools that have been, uh, effective in implementing restorative practices do see a reduction in suspensions, expulsions and disciplinary referrals to the office. Um, you know, something that we also want to do, and again, this is already happen, happening in so many of our classrooms. So I don't want, I don't want it to come off like it's not. Um, but our handbooks don't, don't sound like that or present that way. Um, and when we do think about our new mission and what, and our commitments and what we want to live up to, then what we put into policy and into our code of conduct needs to reflect that. Um, and there will be a lot of learning involved for all of us, right? As we kind of make that switch. Um, but here you can see, this is somebody who is one of the founders of the International Institute for Restorative Practices. Um, says restorative practices enable people to have more voice and choice and things that matter to them in everyday life in exchange for them taking greater responsibility. Because when you invest and you contribute to your community, you, you have more of a desire to keep that community going. And then here again, this is drawing from that toolkit and I've linked it here in my slides in case you're interested in looking at it. And there are a lot of toolkits out there. So again, that was from twenty fourteen. There are current, more current publications from a lot of other different institutions and research institutions. You can see that when we do, um, focus on those social emotional skills and we are deliberate about teaching them, and you actually heard Janessa Katzenberger talk about that last week, when she talked about our curriculum where we're teaching social emotional learning. Um, we help students recognize and manage their emotions, develop caring and concern for others, establish positive relationships, make responsible decisions and handle challenging situations constructively and ethically. And I actually love the quote, right? That's in that light blue box with the arrow that when we think about it, those are not just skills for children. Those are skills that as we build them and as we go to a more restorative approach and start implementing these practices more intentionally, it also helps us as adults. Um, so anyhow, all of this is going to improve relationships, right? So we have a lot of work to do in the district when we think about how do we start the conversation at a district level. Um, to my knowledge, we have, we have people who have gone to certain trainings on restorative practices. Um, but it's not necessarily something we've tackled as a district. But like I said, we do have a lot of places where things, these elements are already happening. But it's going to have to be, you know, a priority for us to keep talking about how we build this type of culture and make it a priority because it's all really about our mindset and how we're framing what's going on. Um, and as you know, and as you've heard me say all year long, uh, belief system and mindset work is, it's really cheap. It doesn't cost a lot of money. What it takes is a lot of time. It takes intentionality. It takes trusting safe spaces, um, and a dedication to understanding that we're really here to build that positive culture, right? We have to understand the why behind it. So there, there will be, um, a transition as we move here. Like we recognize that even as an administrative team, we have a lot of work to do. And sometimes when you've been doing things a certain way and handling disciplinary decisions i- in a certain way, you get into habits. And so sometimes it's challenging assumptions that we have based on habits. And, and we're, we, we all just have to be open to having that conversation. But I want to see what Ashlyn and Alex have to say because I know you've been a part of those conversations about handbook.
Yes, I mean, we haven't really gotten into much about like discipline and that kind of stuff, but, um, excuse me. I think it's just really interesting, kind of like hearing the different perspectives from other students. Cause you know, like you're going over something and you're like, you know, it doesn't apply to me really or I haven't thought of it that way. And so like hearing it, like, you know, from the freshman perspective to like the senior perspective, it's super different and it's really interesting to kind of hear that kind of aspect.
I mean, I agree, and I think something definitely needs to change with the way we do discipline because in the past, I just feel like it hasn't, I don't know, it hasn't really gotten to where it needs to be. And I think we saw this this year with like, um, the freshman class just was, I don't know. So I think this is definitely a better approach to handling the way kids are disciplined because, um, it allows kids to kind of not feel like they're being like, it like makes, I don't know how to say it, like, it's more like adults. Like it's more like we're, we're being treated as adults, I guess, rather than being told we did something wrong and now you have to sit in a room for.
Gives like kids the opportunity to kind of address like the issues of like why they did what they did and kind of talk through and have a conversation of what can they change in the future to like make better decisions, which I, I think is needed.
So the handbooks will likely look, sound and feel different. It will be a process, like I said. And again, this doesn't mean that there aren't going to be consequences. There always have to be consequences. Um, and we also want to find a way to communicate that. So parents have an understanding of, of what happens. We have policy, right, in our district that also defines certain consequences or when something might constitute a suspension or an expulsion, right? Because we know that there may be a few cases where that does happen. But when we're thinking about, you know, what is going on or what are the expectations in my classroom, it's a lot different to sit the students down and to have all of my colleagues down. If I have a special educator who also works in my classroom. If I have an educational assistant who works in my classroom where we have that conversation together, what do we want this community to look like, sound like, feel like? What do you need to do from your part? What do I need to do? You know, what do others need to do? What do we do if something, if something goes wrong? And having deliberate intentional conversations about that. There are curricula out there. I don't know that you really need a curriculum. Um, what you need is to take the time to do it and, and again, just kind of invest in that, taking the time to do the self-reflection and kind of challenging some mindsets that we may not even realize that we have or that we've been just putting into place for a long time. Um, because that's just the way that we've always approached the situation. So this again, just like the transition, uh, for our new transportation company will just require a lot, it will be a process. And there will likely be some growing pains, but I just wanted to bring kind of this language to the board for a first time because you will likely hear it again and again. And I think it will give you some context for when we do bring the handbook language to you, um, later on in June.
One of the things that, okay, I, I'm so excited to see new handbooks. You're just gonna have to like pin me down. I will, I, I have been saying this for years, most pointedly a year ago, this meeting. And, um, I just, I, I'm, I'm so excited. But one of the ways to help that I was thinking that might help the transition in that, in the culture where we are now to where we want to be is something that happened, I don't even know the ki- the specific conditions of why this conversation happened between me and my mother. When she said, when I s- I was complaining about like discipline and, you know, thinking of it as a punishment and, um, she says to me, the woman who speaks five languages says to me, you know, the disciple is a root word from which discipline is created. And discipline means to learn. And discipline, and the definition in the, uh, Oxford languages is to train someone to obey rules or a code of behavior. And the first six synonym, synonyms for discipline in that definition is train, drill, teach, school, coach and educate. Nothing about punitive punishment. This is a word that means to learn. And that's what we're all about. And if we can apply that so that people can learn and be better and feel, and feel welcome and belonging in that they're, they're not gonna, they're not going to have the kinds of disciplinary concerns that require punitive responses. So.
It's a reframe, like think about a marathon runner, marathon runner is disciplined. It, it isn't a bad thing, right? You need to be disciplined. It, it means that you've gotten to a place, like ultimately what we want is to see if, if, if I make a mistake, um, the point of my mistake shouldn't be how many minutes of detention I served or how many days I got kicked out of class or minutes of instruction that I lost. Cause now not only have I lost instructional time, now I need to come back and save face in front of my friends, right? So like even my relationship with my teacher might be harmed, relationship with other students might be harmed. And that isn't even the focus, that's not even thought of. And so then I'm gonna come back the next day and I'm, you know, the likelihood of me engaging positively, it's just going to decrease day after day after day. Um, and we want the opposite. And it's possible with just a simple reframe, um, around how we view our relationships and that sense of community. So, um, like I said, it'll be a process, but, but it's the right process. And I think about our new mission and what we're going to be all about and our commitments. This will be a part of what we focus on. So it is exciting. I'm excited too. Um, and knowing that again, this will require a lot of communication, right? Around the why and, um, not just for staff, but including them also in the conversations for students, for families, right? Um, cause all of a sudden, when you kind of move towards this approach, we, we'll hear, oh, they're lowering expectations. Oh, nobody's held accountable anymore. Um, and it actually couldn't be further from the truth, right? It just isn't about the minutes anymore. It's about what do I need to do to reengage you as a member of this community? Because.
Yeah, hearing an eighteen year old say, not, they're treating us like adults. They're treating us like human beings, right? Like we want to be treated. That's powerful.
And as adults too, so there's a researcher out of, and I, I, I won't go crazy here on, because sometimes I get like geeked out on good education research. But, but there's a researcher out of, I think he's at UC Berkeley now, but I think he started out of Stanford. And if you can imagine kind of a, like a cycle, I should have made a visual of this with arrows, right? So kind of a circular cycle, two arrows. So over here we have a teacher or an educator, whatever role you're in, a little arrow here, right? Cause I impact a student over here. And, and we're going to assume that the teacher got into education because they want to help kids learn. They want to help kids thrive, contribute and belong and reach their full potential, right? That's why you go into education. I've got a student who wants to be successful. I have a student who comes to school and wants to learn, who wants to go to youth apprenticeship or who wants to see their friends, right? Who wants to connect to the community, whatever way possible, right? So we're gonna have those good intentions about both parties. And sometimes what happens is, you know, in the daily grind, and if we don't take, um, time to build those relationships, I as a teacher might not even realize how some of my behaviors are giving you as a student kind of a bad vibe. Maybe my body language, maybe my tone of voice when I respond to you. And I might not even realize it, that I give you a lot of attention, but I don't give you as much attention. Or that's how you're interpreting that, right? So then you as the student are gonna disengage with me, right? Cause there's already, this relationship is a little bit harmed. So that goes back up to me. Now I as the teacher am seeing, and she's, okay, good, she raised her hand today. She doesn't usually participate much. Unconsciously, I'm building assumptions around a student. And the student can feel that. And it's this cycle that's an invisible cycle that can happen and that people can get caught up in, and then you feel that. And there's a perception of the fact that you don't think I care about you. And I can feel it and I can, you know, choose whether or not how much I'm going to engage with you. So anyhow, so this researcher said, you know, after, what do we really need to do to kind of break that cycle? Because again, it's not that people are wanting to do harm or have a bad relationship with each other. They just don't realize it. So anyhow, they, you know, this team of researchers, they actually came up with like a thirty minute professional development module, um, for students and another one for teachers that kind of talked about these things, right? That just addressed, you know, here's a scenario in a classroom, how do you respond? And it's just to try to kind of make people aware of the fact that you can get into this type of cycle and you just need to like consciously break it. Because one, once that stops and then you get to a point where I can actually come over to you and help you engage again, just as easily as it gets broken. And it's always harder to rebuild something up, but it doesn't take much. It, that, that professional development module is all about empathy. It's called empathetic discipline. And again, it's all related to this kind of approach because what matters is the relationship. And just like that can get in a negative cycle, when it's in a positive cycle, kids know it. Kids know when they feel that connection. And you're not gonna feel that connection with everybody, right? None of us feel that connection with everybody. But if that's what we aspire to and if that's what our mission statement says, then what we put into practice and how we talk about this and what we put in our handbook language should reflect that. So hopefully you'll see some of those pieces in June. But like I said, it's an iterative process, um, that's going to require a lot of conversations. But the more we can get away from the, what, what needs to happen to you, to what can I do to help you reengage? And how can I tell you, like, if, if you've said something to me that I have felt disrespect, that's disrespectful to me as the teacher, how do I have that conversation with you, right? And so how do we have those conversations? And if, and if I can't have the conversation and we're not getting anywhere, then, then what? Let's partner with the family. But it isn't about how disrespectful your child was. It was about, hey, I've noticed a change. I've noticed a change and I don't know if you're seeing the same thing. How can we work together? It's the same conversation, but with a different reframe that can make all the difference. So hopefully, um, we're, this is what we're working towards. Just know we're working hard. Um, but hopefully in June, I don't know if it'll be the first meeting, but for sure, obviously in June, we'll have that presented to you. But if you're interested in any type of further resource or anything on restorative practices, I have lots of notes to share. Anything else from your perspective? That's it for me. All right, thank you. Next item is the board promise. Um, we had agreed as a board to put this on again when we had new board members seated to get input. So we're looking to see, um, how new bo- to, how new members feel about, about this statement. As well as just then getting a consensus of the rest of the board too. Again, I like the revisions that, that we did to make it more concise.
After strategic planning though, it does not feel concise.
This is true.
I mean, this is, this is where plain language comes in and, and this does not follow any of the tenants of plain language.
This is true.
That was one of the, the thoughts I had when I was reading it, that I'm not trying to pull out any, um, you know, we talk about racism, sexism, all of these things, not trying to narrow our focus, but are there words that can encompass those, fewer words that can encompass all of those? Like, um, combating injustice and tolerance and inequity? And maybe there are other words, um, because there's a lot there. And then I think, are we missing something? And if we miss something, is somebody gonna feel left out? So if we use fewer words.
There are a lot of adjectives, there are a lot of adverbs that, that looking at it now, I, I think are extraneous.
That was a conversation that we did have, um, when this was presented. And some of those same, um, things were discussed. You're not alone in that.
Does the same group want it?
I very much liked that.
Take another crack at it?
Yeah, I very much liked, did the, somebody write down what Dana said, like, cause I really liked the way that.
It's on video.
Watched two and a half hours of.
I did annotations in the board docs. I did annotations in the board docs, so I.
Oh, there you go, you got it down.
But I do like, that, that's pretty, that's pretty concise in terms of, because that's really what we want to do. Take another crack, to crack at it. Well, let's face it, this came down from like, this is crap, so. That was me, Melissa, waxing eloquently, and this is what it should say, Melissa, Ellen, queen of the Oxford comma.
I, I'm, I'm also thinking about our commitments, right, that we talked about as the strategic planning committee, because so many of those are reflected in a lot of these statements as well, so, you know, that's just something else to consider, is you kind of take another look at this, as we will be coming back in June with more to that, you know, kind of a more finalized product for the board with the strategic plan, that will include those commitment statements, so it's a nice pair document, you know, they go well together, but just something else to keep in mind.
Is it worth wait, sorry?
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, is it worth waiting until after we have our strategic plan finalized? And then, you know, because it, it should dovetail.
It really should.
Well, I was gonna say, one of the purposes to align everything, right?
Yep.
And so we want to make sure, that was one of the things I was gonna say about the handbook, I'm excited to read the handbook, because on policy, we're talking about some of the same things and language matters, and so it, everything doesn't always fall in order like I would like it to, but I think, I was just gonna suggest that Kurt too, that, you know, maybe we just put it on pause, and you guys can reconvene if you're still willing to do that, and then align, or just make sure that it flows.
Well, and I think it would be nice, because the strategic planning document really, you know, is, is a district-wide document, and there are certain tasks that only the board can do, and so if this is the board promise, it is nice that it reflects really.
What we can do.
What you do, right, and the responsibilities that you exercise as the board.
When we're being very intentional, we've used that word a lot, right, so we're being very intentional, and so this is just another way we can be intentional, we're, we're essentially creating a brand around, right, you know, that the community is buying into, and so we want to make sure that, you know, the community, we're getting community buy-in on the strategic plan, we're board members, we represent the community, so, you know, this, all, all of this should be very intentional, it should all really build on, build on top of each other, so I, I really think we should wait for the, the final product of the strategic plan.
I think it needs to be simple, though, no eighty-cent words, no.
That's, that's what I talked about when I said it's not plain language.
Yeah, keep it plain language and simple, not have to go to sixteen different spots to look something up.
Well, we tried to only have to look in the dictionary job.
What's that?
Last time we met, I told you about the flag, see, that was a good idea, I.
Bought one of those flags.
I just have to say though, you know, I, I don't want it so watered down that it's meaningless, you know, so there's a balance.
There is a balance, absolutely. But with Ellen having gone through the strategic planning process, she can help walk us through the simplification procedure.
I think, I, yeah.
You're never gonna get it that simplified, I'm sorry.
No, I don't expect it.
Power clap.
Yeah, I think that's great, let's just put a pause and, you know, thank you guys for agreeing to look at it again.
Well, I think it's nice to, to bring it back with John and Dana.
Mm-hmm.
On the table.
All right, let's move on to business, first item is action on transportation contract.
I move to approve the transportation contract as presented pending legal review.
Kurt made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
I heard Ann. Second, any discussion, any more discussion? Motion carries seven zero. Next item is the consent agenda, does anybody wish to remove anything from consent? I do want to remind people, there was a minor change to one of those policies, it didn't change content, but there was some, just, Lindsay sent out an email, so I just want to make sure everybody knows. Okay, so entertain a motion for consent.
To approve consent agenda items A through C.
Liz made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion carries seven zero. Next item is future agenda, next meeting is June eighth, guys. Um, if you have anything, Lindsay will have policies, right?
Most likely, yes.
Yeah, if we can get through the next batch.
Yeah, we do have meal prices on, yep.
Should be ready. So for the new board members, we're bringing policies in groups, there's a lot of pages, so just preparation, sworn you ahead of time.
I think, feel like it's like been averaging in the ninety range.
I think it was sixty-six.
Sixty-seven last time, yeah.
It was like ninety-some and then sixty-seven, so you know, between.
It's more like a seventy-five average.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And like the first one with the name, that was also a lot of, there were policies in that section that were one-cent policy.
Yep, there were.
Yeah, this, this group is a little more lengthy.
Is there a way to get any of it in, in advance? Is there any way of getting it, if it is a bigger group, like a larger number of pages or it's more dense, is there any way to get it, you know, even earlier than?
Than the Friday before?
Not, that's fine, but it's just.
We can look at timing.
We, we can definitely look at timing, because as, you know, the next few Wednesdays, we have really fun activities to attend, right, with our scholarship and awards nights and everything, but I do think that, you know, perhaps if we have that in draft, yeah, I'll talk to Lindsay, we can figure something out hopefully, because even though the meeting isn't until June eighth, we can have, you know, I'll work on the packet obviously before then, with what I can.
Well, and we had a policy meeting on Fu- on Monday, and really only got through five policies, because we had some really good discussions about that scholarship packet.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship, yeah, sorry. So it kind of depend, you know, we have another one on the twenty-third.
Twenty-fifth. Oh, or is that changing?
Oh, we might need to change though, we'll talk to Dana.
Oh, that's right, yes. Um, but anyway, we'll have one in, in a couple weeks, and then we'll see how far we get, so it may, but that's a good.
If, if it doesn't work out, that's, that's fine, you know, I was just.
No, yeah.
Asking somebody that's sent emails on, at one o'clock on the day of the board meeting, which is, um.
It's, um, no, it's, it's a lot, so.
Yeah.
I request something for a future board meeting, not necessarily in the near future. Several years ago, we had Mr. Qualheims Parliamentary Procedure Group give us a presentation. I don't know if that's come since I've been off or not.
Yeah.
They came last year.
Yeah, they did come last year.
Okay, fine. I would like to see it again at some point in the future.
Like they're probably getting ready for some of their, meet their, they go off in June places, don't they?
Well, June Estate Convention, when they presented the last time, it was around the time that they went to the National Convention, and that's usually the first week of November.
Okay, so, just for future thought.
Right, yep. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion carries seven zero, we're adjourned. Thank you.